I'd like to call to order the meeting of Athens Planning Commission with a revised agenda. It's Thursday, March 20th at 12:05.
About 12:10.
And 12:14.
We're close.
It's after 12. And I'd like to establish a quorum. There are three members. Two of the statutory members, one citizen, that is me. I'd like to ask someone to comment on the minutes or move adoption.
Minister, no? Is anybody speaking?
Oh, do I have to? Okay. I was going to ask you that and then I was on my way.
That's okay.
Would you swear to tell the truth as you know it, nothing but the truth? And stand up, please.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Disposition of minutes? I will accept the minutes from March 6th. The only comment I have is I'm supposed to do my homework and I didn't get all my homework done.
Okay, well, I was, I'm also, Daryl.
I'm not done with my homework. It's pretty broad and I feel like I need to spend more time on it, so.
I would like to discuss the corridor article. It was good.
Okay.
It brought me back to my childhood.
You could put that under communications.
I've put a motion through to accept the minutes.
You did.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Three, zero. Okay, we have two cases on the agenda. Both of them are from Verizon, Monticello Towers, wireless telecommunications special permit, some modifications. Could you stand up and tell us what you're planning?
We have two. Do you want me to talk on both sites?
If you, yeah, I was starting with Monticello.
They're both very similar as to what we're doing.
For the record, does, you haven't heard his name?
I think I'm going to ask him that. He's sworn, but would you?
Yes. My name's Peter Raptis.
And he's from Youngstown.
From Youngstown.
And that's very important.
Because it's snug.
The Athens-Monticello site, it's an existing tower where we are, looks like they're replacing 12 existing antennas and just upgrading the equipment that's already there. So as far as site goes, it's going to be, you're not going to notice any change. There's nothing going to be different looking to the naked eye. They're just swapping out antennas on that site.
No change in the footprint, as you stated.
That's correct.
No problem, no visual problem.
That's correct.
Yeah, in the past, I recall, you were kind of concerned with sort of slippage in that area, but it does state that they're not, no change to the equipment on the ground. We had this come before us previously for some modifications, some concerns stated about the soils.
Oh.
But since you're not adjusting anything on the ground.
Right, no. And if we do, you know, I think they may have to do some stuff inside the shelter, but that won't be seen at the ground level either.
But that's in the existing footprint.
Right, that's in the existing footprint.
And, question, in terms of the antenna, does it have a larger footprint or scope for?
I don't believe so. Just the capacity is different, the strength, I believe, of the antenna. And everything should be in that packet. Obviously, I'm not a RF engineer, so I really can't tell you exactly what it's going to do different, but I know it's to increase the capacity for the area.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions?
In the application or the letter, where did it go? It says in the letter dated March 4th, replacing six or the 12. Does this mean six of the 12 existing?
Six of the 12, yes. That must have been a misprint. So there's 12 existing and they'll take down six of them and swap them out. Now, that was for, I believe that was for the OU North site.
This says, is that, I'm not sure what OU North means unless you're talking about the parking garage.
Right, yeah, there's two sites. The OU North, I believe, is a parking garage. It's on the rooftop. And the Monticello is an actual tower.
We've been talking, I think, about Monticello.
Yes, that's correct.
This letter says Monticello.
Well, it could be both. They could be doing the same upgrades to both.
Okay, I haven't read that letter yet. We just got these.
Well, hey, don't feel bad. I'm not, the guy that's been communicating with you guys is up in Syracuse, so I'm just looking at the same stuff you are.
That's what he said.
We do have different letters.
Okay.
So.
For each one, you mean?
Yes.
But in both cases, it looks like they're replacing six of the 12. Am I reading that correctly?
No.
Twelve of the 12. Twelve of the, with six new models. They just said it a different way.
Okay.
Maintenance swap, installing ancillary equipment, no change.
Oh, I see. Replacing 12 of the existing antennas with six new models.
I know.
Okay.
I didn't mean to switch between the two, but if that's what we're doing, on the parking garage, of which, you know, the city owns and contains, it says you're installing ancillary equipment behind the new antennas, but that's on the antennas? Because then again, you say no change to equipment on the ground.
Yeah, those are all, that's all up top, I believe. You're talking about the, which one are you talking about? On the parking garage?
Yes.
Yes.
She has interest in that.
Right.
And can you say it one more time? I'm sorry.
It says you're installing ancillary equipment behind the new antennas consisting of remote radios and sector boxes for the system to function, but the last, next line says no change to equipment on the ground.
Right, that's correct. Yeah, so it'd be just behind the antenna. It's just a, on the antenna, part of the antenna. And it looks like right here on the parking garage for the OU North, they're putting up six to replace 12 of them. So actually, they're taking some down, it looks like, on that particular site.
I'm curious, because it's stated, your project name here is OU North Campus?
Yes.
We know they're dominant, but we wanted to.
Why is it, I mean, is this something you're doing for on behalf of a high university?
Actually, I think, I'm pretty sure this one, it was a city lease. It's owned by the city.
It is. That's why we're wondering why it's called OU.
Oh.
We haven't turned into OU yet, as far as I know.
It's coming, but we haven't done it.
All right. Well, right across the street, the dormitories and the, I mean, that is, that area of campus is called North Campus.
Now, we always called the ridges the North Green, so that's just, which makes no sense.
That would be south.
They're being ironic when they do that.
No, that's what they called it.
They called it the what?
But you, that's what they call North Campus?
The ridges being North Campus because it's in the south.
I used to volunteer.
Because they're in the same side.
I know. I don't have to complain.
Gotcha.
We're jumping back and forth.
But we're still on Monticello, so.
Oh, okay. I was all the way on the OU North Campus.
That's the one we're talking about now.
Okay.
I figured you were going on, so. RJ back. So do I have a motion to accept the plan?
For both or one?
No, for one.
Okay.
For Monticello.
I'll move we accept the Monticello drive upgrades.
Special use permit.
Special use permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. They did do their structural analysis and all those other requirements that we require, stating well sufficient.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, one, except abstention. Now, we're going to go to the second one, but for a moment, we're going to change places.
Oh, we're going to change places?
We are going to change places.
I guess she's going to make her chair.
They want you here.
No, we don't. You're getting there of yours. You've got cameras here.
So, have we this map? Do we have the other?
Is that good?
Yeah, I turned it off. Doesn't have any map. So, are we to the parking garage, wireless telecommunications special use permit? RJ's about to take over. I would like him to do that, but I'd like to know about North Campus.
They're getting over on case 1403. That's you.
Yeah, that's you.
Okay.
Special use permit.
This would be the Verizon Tower parking garage, wireless telecommunications special use permit and modifications. Let's see, is there anyone you wish to speak to that?
Oh, yeah. That was what we were talking about when you walked in, I believe. As far as that one goes, there's six proposed antennas that are replacing 12 existing ones. So actually, we're reducing the site by taking down six and, or taking down all 12 and putting up six new ones. And as far as look goes, what I was explaining to them earlier was the appearance isn't going to change. They're the same identical looking antennas. It's just what they'll be able to handle as far as capacity and coverage goes.
Any questions, comments from the commission?
I need a magnifying glass to read my plans.
You want the larger one?
You want the larger one?
Yes, please.
I believe it's this one right here.
You get a little additional scrutiny because we own it, and of course, you've titled it OU North Campus. And we are in the process of evaluating our parking garage for needed structural repairs, so.
I think we're up to find more minutes.
And in the course of actually doing upgrades, usually, a lot of times, we have that top floor chained off for good reason.
Right.
Since it's not a lot of room. In the past, actually, we've had somebody just cut the guardrails and drive on up.
Oh, jeez.
So, we would probably request that you contact us to get.
Yes, Verizon will contact whomever's in charge of the property before they would come out. That's in the lease, so we do need to have prior permission to step onto the property.
Okay. I'd say that was.
So someone will be well aware that we're going to be there when we're coming in advance.
Okay.
Would you want them to make a note to contact the service director, given the fact that it's code that's on the form?
Yes.
Yeah. So could you make a note to have them contact the service director?
Sure.
In the city building? Because there's quite a bit of distance between code office and this building.
So you want us to contact the?
Service director.
Service director.
The service director.
Yeah, service director. She's even got more time.
Do you have a name for?
Paula Moscely.
That's me.
Oh, Paula?
Yeah. 592-3338.
That's good. That's an address.
592-3338, 740, presumably.
Right.
And Paula, how do you spell your last name?
M-O-S-C-L-E-Y. It's my last last name.
So far, anyway.
Oh, man. Twenty-eight years, man.
Will the, what you're doing, will it be reduced then as far as like from outward appearances or?
Well, right, well, they're putting less. It looks, from what the plans, what I'm looking at on these plans, it looks like they're taking down all 12 and putting up six new ones. So it's actually less antennas on the tower.
This ray cap cabling is all unseen?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
That would be, probably just be replacing whatever's existing there that goes up there now. And most of the time, that stuff's pretty well hidden.
They do glow at night, those things you don't think about. Yeah, if you, if you look, I mean, they're illuminated. So if you're out on the bypass, you could see the lighting. Yeah, so.
We were talking about some kind of, you know, charge or.
Well, I guess it was kind of, it's one of those things, you know, you're handed, here's a lease for these towers on the parking garage, and all of a sudden, oh, they're illuminated and, you know, we have our own code about illumination and good lighting and, you know, these are broadcasting out of space, but.
Question, what's the timetable on the replacements?
Well, this was one of, this was high priority. I can't give you an exact timeframe, but I'm guessing, you know, they wanted this complete by this month. So, you know, within the next coming months, you know, I'm sure that that's when they'll be coming out to place them. I mean, don't hold me to it, but, you know, that's what I would assume, you know.
Okay. I just wondered.
And to clarify again, the OU North Campus title, is this something that you're doing on your own to upgrade? Or is this a project in conjunction with OU? Or is it?
Oh, no, I mean, it's just, that, when they title those, it's just that they make names of the towers to go with whatever area you're in.
The geographic location is what you're referencing.
Right, yeah. Right, that's correct. So it has really nothing to do with where it's at, you know. Sometimes it goes by the landowner's last name. It could go by the corporation. It could go by the area that it's in, you know.
I guess for the future, we'd like to have that titled City of Athens.
Details.
For the next modification.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the special use permit, approve this special use permit, 1403.
There's a second?
Nancy seconded.
Okay.
All in favor of accepting case number 1403? Say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed?
No.
Fire's getting.
All right.
Sandblasts.
I hope it's worth it, too.
Okay, anyway, I don't know what that is.
Good.
There's sand that Decker was painting.
Make sure they coordinate the work.
Okay.
Okay. It'll come out from the code office. We'll get permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to communications, Sams and Decker.
I think that was dropped.
We dropped table?
It's tabled.
Tabled, okay.
They're designed.
Zoning designation, that's all part of that then?
No.
No, this is separate.
Second communications then would be the zoning designation for annexation request. Is there someone here who wishes to speak to that?
You know, my name is Robert Rittenhouse.
Okay, would you like to come to the podium?
You may wind up having to yell.
And if you could just, again, identify yourself, I'd appreciate it for the public there.
Sure. My name is Robert Rittenhouse. I'm an attorney at Lebel and Associates, and I represent the landowner, Alex Collodice, and his aunt, who's now deceased. I saw that this was on your agenda today, so I stopped by to answer any questions you may have. I'm not sure what the communication was that you received.
Basically, it's just a memorandum from March 10th from the council, zoning designation for annexation requests. I sent it was because it's been expedited, so. So the city council requests that you consider zoning designation and follow your recommendation to, for this particular plot of land. So I think that's why we're having that discussion. As I say, it's actual communication. I don't know if we're voting on it or not. Is that the intention?
I do not know.
Were you looking for a vote today then, or was this?
I'm just here to provide information if you need it. The term expedited, I think, is not as expedited as you were, I'm saying it's going to take a couple of months.
They are seeking our recommendation. They, and Mayor, I wasn't at council, but I think the services were identified on Monday?
Yes. The services are identified for water sewer, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, police and fire, the water contingent upon a release, written release from LIAX, I believe, from the property, pretty much from LIAX as well as a negotiation with the property owner.
That's correct.
I think that was the gist of.
Yes, so this has been brought to us. They are seeking our recommendation for the zoning designation.
What the intention is, is that a brewery will eventually go into that area. I'm speaking to Paul. He's indicated that he thinks a B3 would be appropriate.
Now, is everything we're looking at in yellow, it's not designated, that's not all R3 or?
What you're seeing there, Paula, actually, this piece of land right here is R3.
The Grand Vista Village.
The Grand Vista Village. These two parcels right here are actually zoned B3.
Capital first.
Yep. And then this, this back parcel, that dogleg, Citizens Independent Bank Corp., that is zoned open space.
I'm sorry, what was that one?
This, this piece is open space.
Okay.
Zoned open space. This is R3. That's where the reserve at the Falls, I think it's called. And then the two front parcels at Phase 682 are zoned B3.
Could you point out the open space one more time, please, Paul?
I know the Citizens Independent Bank is open space because we're seeking an easement for a bikeway connector there.
I don't know. It looks like it's connected. This is also B3 right here?
I believe B3, B3. This has split zoning, I believe.
Okay.
R3 and open space back there. This is open space. That's R3. This is actually R3.
Is this a split go, just to there?
It goes just to there, yeah.
Okay. And this, on this side is R, open spaces?
This is outside the city limits.
Okay, outside.
But this is, this is that whole property that the city is.
We purchased it.
Putting in a bike, a bike connector right in there.
Are we going to annex it in or no?
We haven't.
I do not know.
We haven't.
We have other parts. There's other pieces of real estate we own that are outside the city.
Paul, is this Pete Smith tied to Grand Vista?
No, not necessarily. It could be something from the other's office.
So you're saying this is B3, or B3 also?
This is my record.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Take it for a break. There's split zoning right there.
Ah, that's what you said.
Open space, open space.
So all this.
R3.
Yeah.
B3, C3.
Okay.
So there's B3 right there.
Okay.
That's what they're requesting annexation for.
She'd go to the map. She sure did.
Oh, I was wondering where that map was.
I was, yeah, I was looking over there.
That would have made it easier.
Well, they haven't put it up on the wall yet.
Yeah, that's correct, Paul. Actually, that's.
Good show, Paul.
The one that says Smith might be.
And this would also be, have the B3.
Yeah, I had it right.
Yes.
That's right.
That entire wedge is going to be B3, right?
Yeah.
That's the intention, yes.
Okay.
The parcels right here.
So it's bordered by the river on one side, Armitage Road on the other side. And it doesn't go all the way.
These are most liberal of business zones. Is that a correct word?
Mm-hmm.
Permissive? Okay, I don't.
I think they're the sort of catch-on, I think.
And the, it was a car repair in that particular parcel earlier, some kind of body shop or something?
Hutton's Garage.
Hutton's Garage. And is that functioning right now? No?
No, I think he's been gone for a number, at least gone from the property for a number of years.
It's actually a cleanup from a wellhead protection standpoint of what was existing. And actually, that would not even be allowed in today's.
I know, there was something.
Water, essentially, lines.
Yeah.
There is, as far as I know, I think sewers goes by. Talking to Andy, sewer goes by.
Water goes by, too.
Water is actually LIAX. Water goes by, but the question would be, does LIAX have the capacity? Because I think it's a smaller line. That was the conversation. And really, it's up to the property owner to negotiate that, yeah. Because the way I understand it, they have to buy LIAX out or at least negotiate.
And Mr. Rittenhouse could probably speak to that process.
Yeah, you're probably in the middle of it. So do you have any, you know?
You're on the right track.
Okay.
What's the city benefiting as far as like city services, things of that nature? Is there any benefit that if the water's going to LIAX and, you know, is there?
The intention is that we will be doing the water as well. They have to negotiate that to transfer.
To transfer, okay.
It's my understanding that the amount of water that LIAX could provide wouldn't be sufficient for proposed use.
One of the situations with that site specifically is that because it's in the city's wellhead protection zone, you, the property owner can't put in a septic system. So the only way that they can get services is to get the city sewer. And the city's policy in the past has been that the only, we will only offer sewer in those situations with an annexation.
Yes.
So it's kind of a catch 22.
And normally, we combine the water and sewer because that's how we measure the amount of sewage.
Right.
By the water meter.
That's correct.
So that's the match. And again, we service University Estates to the, I guess, northwest of it. So we're already providing, you know, protection, police protection, fire protection in that zone as well.
And those are, I mean, I'm assuming it'll be on city water.
Correct.
And sewer. And those are proprietary funds that come in, so that's, there's a benefit there. And of course, additionally, if there is a business there, there's business taxes and, you know, some.
Income tax.
And they would have to comply with the wellhead protection.
Oh, yes.
And again, really, our scope is just to designate a zone for it, as the city council's the next step to actually do the annexation. The other ones actually will say, yes, we will annex.
And RJ, they presented to city council at a committee meeting that I attended, and, you know, we're planning on a bikeway connector here at the Ron Hope that would come up to, get up to Armitage. And so I think the hopes from the new owners is that that would also be another venue and way to get there, you know, on a nice Friday afternoon or something. If you recall, Jeff.
Work.
Ride out, yeah, don't drive.
Bicycle out, work off the calories when you're done.
Wobble home.
But this is on the wrong side of the river. You're going to have to cross in there?
Does anybody have any questions or comments about it, or Nancy?
I guess I'm wondering what the impact of this zoning designation, which affords the property some additional value, will have on the adjacent property and properties, which are not in the city, but still.
Well, any improvement on those properties, if they are going to scale up, they'd have to deal with more robust septic systems. Is that what you're asking, or?
No, I'm interested in, certainly, the property to the southwest has potential for development.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, yeah, maybe. I can see a hotel or something like that, potentially. Maybe not.
It's not that bigger plot.
Well, and it's also not very hilly, so it surely wouldn't work in Athens.
That says Nancy Vane.
No, I just wonder. I happen to like that property quite a bit, and I just wondered what it would do. Is B3 a zone that we're going to start incorporate a brewery, microbrewery? I mean, we allowed it uptown by a zoning board decision and nobody thought it. So, I mean, it's.
Well, are you talking about a brewery versus a bar? I mean, that's two different licenses, actually. A brewery, I think, is an A license, if my memory's correct, whereas a bar or carryout's a C and a D.
Okay, liquor control things notwithstanding, I was thinking more about the impact on the adjacent property owners. I don't see that this will be much different from what was allowed uptown, will it? Or will it?
I don't visualize it being a bar first, but a brewery first. And I don't know what the stipulations are for that, actually.
See, it just, I just keep, I told you when I walked in, I was concerned about its impact on that area, and I don't know what will happen across the street.
Nancy, the.
You said that out loud.
The request was for a B3 zoning because the use is classified in a B3 as what, as a bottling works, actually, which is how Jackie O's is treated on the Cheese Barn, Cheese Barn area. The only requirement that our zoning code has with a bottling works is that it must, it must have 100 feet of distance from any of our R zones at a minimum. John and I double-checked all the distances from that zone as a B3 to those, that R3 zone on, at University Estates. And at its closest, it was like 175 feet or 150 feet.
See, it seems to me, though, Paul, that they're treating this as if it's a noxious facility in a way with the distances and everything else. And if it's micro, I don't see that it is.
Right. My guess would be bottling works, it's almost treating it more of an assembly line, noise, noise issue. You've got bottles clanking together as they go down the.
Now, they're all cans anyway, for the most part, except not beer. Well, I guess I don't know about, see, it just seems like, well, it's across the street, who knows?
What are you saying, across the street?
I mean, across Armitage.
Well, it's kind of the backside, is again, you know, there's.
Yeah.
There is already B3 zoning at University Estates.
That's what we're talking about.
On 682, right.
And this strip, that strip that is kind of funny is the pathway they used before for the Grand Vista.
Are you talking about the frontage?
You mean, no, she means the strip in between.
In between, that fronts right on Hutton's old spot.
This, this in-between piece.
See, if you assure me that this is not really a noxious facility, that it won't degrade the property adjacent to it, then I wouldn't be questioning it. But I guess the bottling works bit and the whole concept is making me a little shy about the change.
Nancy, if it makes you feel any better, I spoke to Gary Politz this morning, who owns Grand Vista Villages. He was quite excited about this. He joked that he was going to put a slide in for his tenants to have easier access to get down there.
But he lives in Columbus, right?
He said if you need a letter from him, he'd be happy to provide one.
I don't think it would help me. I don't think it would help me.
Okay.
Is your concern the, the fact that it may in, affect negatively the people who don't live in the city, the, in the back?
Yeah.
Well, they don't want zoning, you know?
I don't know that they've really made that decision, but I, you know, I don't know exactly what it will be.
I'm pretty sure this little strip here, Paula, in between Capital First and Pete Smith.
What's labeled it?
Wasn't that what we always referred to as the docks, kind of construction staging area, okay?
I thought it was a construction zone.
So, I mean...
Which strip, Paula? The, the one that's requesting annexation?
No.
No, the strip in University Estates.
We have to look at the...
I wouldn't be sure which is which over there, but I...
Well, Nancy knows what I'm talking about.
I would assume that was...
I brought it up a couple minutes ago.
Do we need to make a recommendation today?
You do.
We do.
Well, I mean, the request is before you, I shouldn't speak like that. I would move to, uh, recommend a B3 zoning designation for, uh, this 2.2064 acres located on Armagey's Road, pending, meeting all the requirements for annexation.
Including the wellhead protection stuff.
That's a, that's a given, that's given, whether you annex them a city or not.
Okay.
Um, quick question, are you talking about a lot of trucking, as far as like, is it a bottling, are you talking about a lot of trucks going in and out, or, or it's just basically, again, like a Jackie O's, where...
I think it's gonna be very similar to the, the Jackie O's facility on Richland.
Well, no, the Jack, Jackie O's, he's talking about the T, the brewery on Stimson.
I'm sorry, not Richland, Stimson.
We're just, yeah.
And?
I'll second it.
Does increase our, our, uh, burden on the streets to maintain this additional property, but...
Oh, yeah, cause we'll have to take care of more of Armagey's now. Guess one of the questions, how much is still city township street?
Andy's already reviewed it. He said, Andy Stone's reviewed that.
Right, indicated that...
But no problem.
No problem.
Okay.
Just a little blacked up here, a little black.
The cul-de-sac.
We have a motion, anybody else have any?
I had the second.
Okay, we have a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Opposed.
Opposed, okay, one opposed.
So three, four, or one against?
And three, four.
So the recommendation will go to council.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're lucky you showed up. You're lucky you showed up.
Okay, moving our along, uh, let's see, reports, uh...
I'm sorry, before we go to that, under communications, is this where we're having our corridor talk?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna, I was looking for that from the notice, who was gonna go first with that?
Well, I'm not even done, and I think, and then she's got questions, and so...
Well, I, well, let's just talk about... Yeah, I was gonna be first, but I didn't think we had a full, we had a full slate, it didn't seem like we were going to have time today.
Okay, so, we're gonna start off with...
We're gonna postpone it a week, or two.
Should wait till Nicholas is here.
Yeah, we'll just postpone it, and Nancy will go first.
Yeah, I don't know that the homework will be done, but maybe yours will be, did everybody get the copy of their corridor?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We all did, that's very nice.
Okay.
But see, when I was reading, and I just went, this is where I started with Paul about an hour, no, about forty-five minutes ago, this is a really good article, but it doesn't apply to my, to my particular corridor, it applies to my neighborhood when I was a kid, which had two arterial streets that were corridors, you know, and where you have a tributary area that kind of collects and goes to the store and gets off the bus or streetcar, I'm dating myself, and now they're all, of course, empty storefronts, with housing on the second floor, and you know, certainly, the places that are mentioned are very upscale, nice, you know, Dublin and other places like that, and I just wonder, I asked Paul if he had one for a slightly downscale, more decrepit area, where, where the, and I actually, I'd like to pull up the, pull up the, um, Google map and go down it when we start, because I think it's not a, zoning isn't always aesthetical, I mean, it's not gonna make a difference, but I, you know, I was starting to think about what we might wanna do in terms of an overlay for this district, to make it more of a, um, of an incubator type of place, because there's a lot of space, and there are city services that they could use, and they could try their activity out and then move on.
Similar to what's occurring like at AceNet, and you had the...
Right, yeah.
Global cooling. Thank you.
Yes.
I mean...
And that would make it, you know, that would make no queasiness of anybody.
Instead of a big industrial park?
Yeah, I think that's more...
This would be more of a...
And workspace.
Yeah.
Right, and you've been big on that.
And workspace, yeah, and a few square feet, and that's what I was kind of going toward, but I didn't wanna be too far out in the bushel, you know?
What you're talking about is something that blends between a B3 and a manufacturing, something light manufacturing.
Yes, and I would not even call it, I would call it, um, incubator.
Incubator space.
Yeah, incubator space, and that would include manufacturing, light manufacturing, and in fact, there's very little heavy manufacturing, certainly none here.
Very little here.
Except for bottling.
Well, I don't know, I mean...
I'm sorry.
It's canning probably is a better...
It's probably canning, yes. Taking, yeah.
Does the city, in, going down the road, in terms of encouraging what we would like to see in terms of businesses, industry in town, uh, do they wanna maybe reconsider even the name manufacturing, as far as manufacturing zone?
Beaker's Mall.
That would direct it in a different direction?
Well, let's see how it goes.
In terms of, you know, just in terms of what people commonly think of manufacturing?
I need to get you a bikeway specification for your corridor.
We could, although we just have your corridor.
Or is it just, nothing really?
It's on the web.
Okay. So, I don't think it will look the same as those little beads on a string that your, that your, the article writer talked about, it's gonna be much more rough and ready, you know, it's gonna be more what's existing there, commercial intertwined with incubator, it is that now, and I don't think it would hurt in the future to have that kind of space available.
The, the fact it's an incubator is because of the cost of, of renting, I think, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's really what drives that, so if we say, we're, we're gonna make it an incubator in a...
We're gonna allow incubators to happen there.
The price of the rent will go up and it'll cease to be an incubator.
You think?
I don't know, success can do that.
Well, we'll try that, try and see what happens, that could easily be the case.
The other side of, of course, it would still, the overlay of wellhead protection for Columbus Road in particular, which is what you're...
And flood.
Mm-hmm.
What?
And flood.
It's only on one side, I think, maybe with the new insurance rates, even those places across, across the road that are elevated, I wonder how that will affect it.
The floodplain shrinks on Columbus Road with those new maps.
Yeah.
It does?
On both sides of the, both sides of the road, yeah.
How about those elevated places, either the inside or outside?
On the, uh, that would be on the east side of the road, this, the, the city side as opposed to the riverside?
The riverside.
The opposite.
No, she means the riverside.
The riverside of the road.
The riverside, uh, there is some, things are being removed and, and is shrinking, yeah, all, those elevated areas.
So there is potential there, it's just there are so few places, we have all these B3 zones with little postage stamp sized lots, and there's a little bit more space, not much, just don't want them to cut down the hills.
Right.
Especially beneath my house. Anyway, so I was just ruminating a little bit, and I wanted to make sure that if I come back, you can say, oh, that isn't gonna work, it's gonna cost too much money for rents once we call it that, but if we permit it with a conditional use permit, then I think that would be a way to use, a combined, mixed use, uh, type of structure, where they have several floors.
Do you think it's important to make sure that, going down the road too, that, uh, all the property along Columbus Road is annexed into the city, because...
I do.
There are parts that are not, right, or at least one that aren't?
Right.
There is one.
Historically, I think there's a story in it, but I don't...
Yeah, we should, well, if they haven't needed, first of all, I think what you're talking, the area you're talking about is pretty, is, is pretty shallow, I mean, it probably is in the, still in the floodplain, they'd have to build it up, and then they'd need services, and as soon as they need services, they'd be talking to us, I mean, they can't put a septic system there either.
Right, but if there's already a structure...
But if their septic system isn't working, we'd probably never know it, given the water log situation, all right?
It, it's possible they're being served with utilities and paying the...
The extra.
Out of area, I can check on that.
I wonder.
Another thing is that, that Athens Mall, that antique mall.
Yeah, that's right, if they're outside the city limit zone, they're using us, oh, water, they get a surcharge, what is it, fifty percent or twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Used to be, I don't know.
What I'm asking is, is something, is it in the city's interest to try to...
Yes.
Encourage annexation with that piece of truck?
At the ti, at the time when they came with the, um, car wash, we were in cur, I mean, we just didn't have any support from the administration, right?
Yeah, I think so. I thought that was annexed, the car wash is not?
Yes, that may be, but the other portion of the business never was, and now they've, he's moved out from the city completely, right, so...
And also...
So there's new owners to approach, for instance, so I don't know that there was an ownership change.
Land is still, yeah, Van Dyke still owns that piece of land.
And another thing about it is that when University Estates was, you know, Dreams of Glory, that was a, there was a river crossing proposed for that area, remember?
Further down, I thought, yeah.
Yeah, where that loop, where the big loop comes around in the floodplain.
I don't think that's gonna happen, is it?
No, I don't think so.
Unless we're required for Phase 3 from the, the new owners of University Estates.
And that would have a totally different impact on this, so, but I don't see it happening.
It'd be good to look at protecting that, though, now that you mention that, that's right, cause that property has been sold.
I don't, I think that the cost of making that bridge would be phenomenal.
It would be.
So, anyway, that's, I'm just starting to think through it, I, I like what the planners did, and I, I'm gonna try and integrate the two, and we'll come back next time, I'll be ready to roll. Hey Paul, if you'll set it up with Google Maps to go down the road?
Sure.
I mean, visually, it's not as pleasing as, say, Stimson, I mean, no offense Columbus Road, but it isn't, and there's a real separation between the neighborhoods and the road because of the, because of the elevation, only one, really only one road, one way in, and that's Terrace Drive, otherwise, it's just totally isolated.
Well...
It's a, it's an arterial street devoted to, to business that is largely automobile, which is a different animal from some of the others.
We're working towards making it more connected with the bikeway connection and what we'll do with transit, so, there's, there's hope, there's a future that we're planning for.
But it's just the, um, the residential support system that would make it a walking or a, is not there.
Now, you have the door lane that has some apartments on it, but that's not enough to actually change the, the character, I don't think.
I think, but those are all issues that we'll address in each one, like walking, beads on a necklace, and so, okay.
Now, what I was just suggesting then, let me, do we wanna maybe put an order to this, you know, so that we know who's going at what time, and, and I don't know that we've worked that out.
Well, I thought Nicholas assigned me to go first.
I, uh, I was taken aback when I read the minutes, it said that I was supposed to have my work conducted by this meeting, but not present to April, I'm not done, so that's...
I'm not done either.
And I don't know if you really have, I mean, are we gonna present PowerPoints or something, or what will we do?
I think we need further discussion with Nicholas when he returns, which would be our...
Meeting that we do.
April meeting that we're supposed to be presenting, but we're...
We'll let him go first, he's, he's the chair.
Jeff has a comment.
I just wanted to ask a question, uh, would there be any objection to our advantage or, I think, if, uh, people who are walking corridors, uh, know all of their board representatives or someone on council, I'd be interested in blocking Richland, whoever.
That would be Nicholas.
Nicholas got Richland, yeah.
But any one of us could do it.
Ankle Breaker Avenue.
Yeah. Hey, we're gonna get it fixed.
Well, people are really concerned about Richland, even people that don't live on, in that vicinity.
Right.
At least I've heard that, people express concern.
Yeah. Well, I know that people talk to Johnsons, I hear that every morning, get my coffee and breakfast. When's it gonna happen, when's it gonna get done?
What will it be like?
Well, I think I hear also Jeff saying, and I see merit to that, is, is, you know, we're broadcasting that we're supposed to be evaluating our corridors, and that we